We'll call the city council meeting for Monday, July 17th to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmeus?
Here.
Meske?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America. And to your people, for which we stand. One nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Alvarado? Could you get me there? Are there any proposed additions to the agenda?
Mayor, on behalf of staff, I would like to make a recommendation that the three job descriptions we discussed earlier in the work session be added to the agenda, and also the question of Mike McGuire, the former city administrator interim, his compensation question.
Anything else for council? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amendments?
Move. Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda with the additions. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmeus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That roll call passes. Next is the amendment to the building official job description. This was presented by staff, and is there a motion to approve this?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the building official job description. Mr. Peterson, do you wish to make any comments?
Mayor Calvin, members of the council, I have nothing to add beyond what staff offered at the work session, other than it's appropriate at this time to recognize those changes and make the subsequent adjustment to compensation.
And for the viewing public, there were adjustments to three position descriptions recommended in our work session. These job descriptions have not been updated since 2000, and so we're bringing them up to current standards to meet the current needs. So that's what we're moving here. Some of them are, most of them are very minor, but they are just to reflect current duties as assigned. There's been a motion made and seconded discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass. Next is an amendment to the police department administrative job description. Chief Felton, do you have any comments you wish to make?
I do not.
I'll move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the police department administrative assistant job description. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next is an amendment to the public works clerk job description. Mr. Christensen, any comments you'd wish to make?
Nothing at this time.
Council?
I will enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to amend the public works clerk job description as presented during the work session. Councilmember Meske?
Minimal qualifications, were they as presented, or have you changed your mind?
Sorry, Councilmember Meske, maybe I did have something to add. No, there, I would propose to leave them as amended.
Thank you.
Motion and second are in agreement with that? As amended?
What was the amendment?
The amendment was changing the requirements to the job description that we discussed in the work session.
He did not change them.
He didn't.
No amendment. Oh, you did not change them. You were not recommending them. Oh, I'm sorry.
Lefty.
It's a better turn on my hearing. Additional discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next is compensation for Mr. Mike McGuire interim city administrator. Mr. Holland?
Mayor and council, I make the recommendation for a motion to approve the compensation of forty-four hours to Mike McGuire, per his request.
Council?
I will enter that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we go to the open forum. We have two people who have asked to speak. The first is the Neighborhood Theater Company.
Don't we need to do this?
We did that already. Hold on a minute. Hold on just a second. I did do that under approving consent agenda with roll call? There was nothing removed?
You approved the agenda, but you didn't approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll back up again. Okay, let's approve the consent agenda. Council, what do you wish to do?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion.
Normally Judy reads the items that are in the consent agenda, and I see a couple of resolutions in there.
Would you like to assist us with that, Judy?
Certainly can.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have for the council to approve the city council minutes of July 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of July 10th, Planning Commission minutes of July 12th, a resolution to approve school resource officer agreement, three resolutions amending the project budgets for project number seventeen oh one B, seventeen oh three A, and seventeen oh three B, also to accept the consideration and nominations to the city charter commission, fire department monthly statistics for May and June, building report for the month of June, accounts payable report through June, through July 12th, 2017, and financial reports.
Mr. Mayor, do they require some motions or resolutions?
It would take a roll call vote, is what it would take.
Just for the consent, the whole agenda?
Right.
So the resolutions are included in there?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody wish to pull any of the items under consent? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmeus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
I guess I just have to say, when one takes a meeting off, they lose the flow. So, thank you for keeping me on track. So I believe we're back on track at this point. There was nothing removed from consent. Next, we have the open forum. And in our open forum, if you choose, you can come to the podium and address the council. And it's the Neighborhood Theater Group, and if one of you would like to come to the podium, address where you are from, and what you are doing, and what you'd like to address the council. You get three minutes to speak with us, and you have a timer, and at the end of that, at the end of your three minutes, there's a buzzer that goes off, so don't let that scare you. So, the first time we did it, the person that was standing up there, it was a loud buzz, and it scared the council along with the person presenting. So, go ahead and feel free, you have three minutes.
Great. Hi, thank you so much for having us. We're from New York City, and we're here, we're the Neighborhood Theater Project, and we are doing a theater project about Wilmer. So we, our company, we use methods of interviews, conversation, and stories to create original documentary theater. So we're going back to New York to produce our project, and then coming back to Wilmer, hopefully, to also produce and create the story of this town. And, yeah, so we just wanted to say hello, and we also wanted to say if anyone up here, back here, wants to talk to us afterwards, or needs information, email, Facebook, phone number, then please come talk to us. We would love to speak to any, any and all. So, thank you so much. I guess the buzzer didn't go off, so I'm just gonna...
You're good to go. Thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Dave Little.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. David Little, twenty-two oh one, Twenty-first Street, Southwest, Wilmer. I understand, Mr. Mayor, you'll be making some comments afterwards about Mr., I'm sure I'll mispronounce his name, Sui or Sue? Okay. Anyway, following what's happened with him, I applaud the efforts of Isaiah and other groups and individuals who are supporting him. Our economy, as many experts know, would be in dire straits if all eleven million undocumented people in the USA were suddenly deported. Well, the solution to this problem lies with Congress, and I call on my fellow Americans in the city council to contact our members of Congress and other leaders to urge them to enact legislation that will allow millions of law-abiding, family-oriented, and tax-paying individuals like Mr. Sui to come out of the shadows and to live and work legally in the United States of America. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Little. Next, we have a consideration of an amendment to the rural service district ordinance. Mr. Scott, our city attorney, will introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. You have a draft ordinance before you that does two things. In section one, it removes certain parcels and sequences of parcels from the rural service district, and would put them into the general city urban district, which is what the majority of taxpayers are in, and pay a higher tax rate. The second thing it does is it adjusts the ratio between the two districts, between the rural service district and the urban service district. It changes it from one percent, which was the most recent city council ordinance establishing the rural service district rate. So it changes it from one percent to the, it would raise the rate in the rural service district to the level that is paid in the adjoining Wilmer township. It's proposed that this be set for a public hearing on September 5th at seven oh one that skips a meeting because there's a thirty-day requirement by statute that the public notice precede the public hearing by thirty days. So the recommendation is that you set it for the hearing on September 5th.
So we'll be looking for a motion to set a public hearing for September 5th, 2017, at seven oh one PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a motion for a public hearing to consider the amendment to the rural service district ordinance. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, the consideration of accepting a donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation for Robins Island Destination Playground, Playground Project. Mr. Scott?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you another resolution. You had one at your last meeting as well. This is to accept a donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation to support the Destination Playground Project at Robins Island. I don't know if this is the last one, probably not. They're coming through as expenses are incurred and come due on that project. This amount is for thirty thousand dollars, in addition to an extensive list of in-kind services that were donated to that project, which are attached to the resolution as exhibit A. Statute requires that these donations be accepted by resolution, by a two-thirds vote, so you need six votes in favor to accept the donation. The recommendation is that you pass the resolution before you.
We need someone to introduce the...
Introduce the resolution?
I'll second it.
A motion is made and seconded to introduce a resolution to accepting a donation from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation for Robins Island Destination Playground. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmeus?
Aye.
Meske?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that resolution does pass. Mr. Scott, I think there may be one more donation coming through, or a summary of everything else, but this may be the final one as well. But this is a great project in our community. We've got a lot of good comments coming. I drive by Robins Island, and Robins Island is full, so this is a very good project. So, thank you to our over thirty-seven hundred community volunteers that helped build this playground. So, as most of you know, this is a project near and dear to my heart, and I am really pleased that our community stepped up to assist us with this project. Next is a proposed letter to the community ed and rec joint powers, a letter that is in our packet. Mr. Holland?
Mayor and council, in your packets, there was two letters. One, a letter addressed to the city, in particular myself, from the school superintendent, Dr. Jeff Holmes, and then also the second letter was my reply back to him. Now, that letter has not been sent back to him. What I'm asking for tonight is a consensus to approve that letter being sent back, and what makes that so particular and curious to why I'm asking for that, is it states in there that under the joint powers agreement, that we can engage in negotiation, and we also can withdraw from the joint powers agreement. And if we do so, we have to give at least twelve months' notice. And so the letter that I received from the school district stated that they were considering, or would at least have the option. So that was a formal notice that I received. And so this is just our reply back to the school superintendent, stating that we also reserve that right. Now, having said that, everyone should know that the school superintendent and myself have had a couple of conversations about the joint powers agreement, and about the community education and recreation department, and the cooperation between the city and the school district. Right now, there is no one, I repeat, no one, making the recommendation that this joint powers agreement be dissolved. So I want to make that perfectly clear. But tonight, I would like to have a consensus for me to send this reply letter back to the school district. And that's the question, Mayor.
Okay, so this letter that you have in front of you, and I think we should maybe even make it more formal, is we should make it in the form of a motion that we direct the city administrator so that the council is responsible for the action, not the city administrator. So, we could do it either way. We can do it as Mr. Holland suggested, or we could certainly do it in a more formal action. I would prefer the more formal action. Councilmember Nelson?
I will make a motion.
Second.
That we authorize Mr. Holland to send the letter to the school.
Motion made and seconded to instruct the city administrator to send the letter as attached, with the understanding that this just gives us the ability to negotiate. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
Just if I may, the school district added that provision the last time we renewed the contract, and I would encourage, and maybe ask staff, I know that the school board is, has been sent a Google Doc to review the actual joint powers agreement, and I think it would be beneficial for all the council members to be able to have access to the same thing, to look at what's in that joint powers agreement as we have a discussion about what is in the best interest of our community regarding community education and recreation. And so I think that will be helpful, and I think we just need to look at doing what's best for our community.
Mr. Holland, if you could send that to us pending the outcome of the vote. Additional discussion, Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we indeed going to review the next few weeks in, as it states in the letter?
Yes. Dr. Holmes and myself are trying to set up a couple of meetings here within the next month.
Okay, will it include some council members, or just the two of you?
Right now, it's myself and Steve Brizdin and Dr. Holmes. The three of us, initially, that's what we're going to talk about, is just the role, especially since I'm new here, that I get a better understanding of what the city's responsibilities and what the schools' responsibilities are. As, if we come to fundamentally change the joint powers agreement, then I would propose, obviously, that it would come back to the council for other, one, a meeting, or at least an update from myself.
I think it would be interesting to have the council review this. Rick and myself have been on here a while, and we were part of the council prior to this agreement, and it would be interesting to compare how one operated versus the other. And I would suggest that we do that, just to bring everybody up to speed.
Okay. Well, I will make sure everybody gets the latest copy of the joint powers agreement. We can start from there.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Christensen, are you making a friendly amendment to include the process, to include council members, or not?
I think we should discuss it at maybe our work session the next, in two weeks. I mean, it's certainly worth reviewing. I mean, it says in here, "We will engage in the review." We, I suspect, I suspected was the city council, and not just our administrator and the school superintendent. It's, I think it's worth speaking to.
Councilmember Nelson?
I think there's two different subjects here, too. We have the legal joint powers agreement document that is in the process of being reviewed. But I think as we review that document, it also will speak to how we function and what we need to do in the future. And so I think the review of the document is one thing, the future of the city's role and the schools' role in the, in the joint powers, I think is also something that will be reviewed, and I think that's what you are doing now, is to have an understanding of how that community ed and rec functions right now.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to pull us back to the motion. The motion is to approve the, to authorize the city administrator to send the letter on behalf of the council. So, we have some side conversations happening here. It's all paramount to the discussion, but the motion is to allow the letter to be sent, and then follow-up discussion that will take place. Additional comments to the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Mr. Holland, city administrator comments?
Just a couple of comments. The, this Saturday, we're going to do our retreat at nine o'clock at the bank, and just to get a head count for the lunch, is there anyone, I think there's one member that is maybe not going to attend that I know of? Is there anyone else that doesn't? Two more? Okay. Otherwise, everyone else will be able to make it. Okay. So, that's this Saturday. And then also, just a reminder that on August 1st, there's a lot of things going on. There's Rockin' Robins, there's Neighborhood Night Out, and we are going to have an employees' pool party that night also. So there's more information for that to come, but I appreciate if you can make it out to those events. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, I would like to make a couple announcements. We've got a lot of great things happening in our community, and thank you for those that worked on our Wilmer Fest activities. It was a great event. I left town right at the end of that, and I know it was, it was going hot and heavy, so I know that everybody had a great time, and thanks to the Wilmer Fest people for the work that they did on that. The next thing I'd like to address is that we have a citizen in Wilmer who last Tuesday was picked up by ICE and brought to Immigration Services down in the metro area. And I've been in contact with the people from Isaiah. I was made aware of this on Saturday afternoon, late in the day. And last night, I attended a prayer vigil that was held at Living Hope Church in regards to this issue. And Melvin is an individual who has resided in our community for about ten years, and there was a front-page article in the West Central Tribune today talking about the situation there. And when I ran for mayor, one of the things that I said is that I wanted to make sure that we represent all people and all people equally. And this appears to me to be a situation that, that Melvin was picked up at his place of employment, and as Mr. Little said in his comments, that one of the things is, is that there are a lot of people that are undocumented in our community. And I don't want to talk about the issue of undocumentedation and that issue. What I want to talk about is a family man that has two young children, that resides in our community, pays taxes in our community, and is a giving person in our community. And one of the things that we hear regularly when we talk about the fabric of a community and the fabric of a family, is the importance of a father figure in that household. And it concerns me greatly when a father is removed from a home. I've spoken with Chief Felton in regards to this, and so we really don't know a lot of the details behind it. Our local police department was not involved in the process. It was done by ICE. ICE came in to Jenniel. It did not involve our sheriff's department, did not involve our police department. One of the questions that came up last night, and I want to make sure that our public that's listening tonight hears this loud and clear, is that our police officers do not and will not stop somebody based simply on the color of their skin or the appearance of race. In talking with the chief today, he made it very clear to me that if somebody like that was employed by the Wilmer Police Department, their career would be pretty short. And I applaud our police chief for his leadership in his department, for his willingness to do the right thing. I know you've met with the people from Isaiah on numerous occasions, you've also met with our diverse community, and I thank you and your officers for the good job that you do. This issue came up at December of last year, and the thing that I brought up at that time is I thought the biggest thing that would approach us at the council table was the fact that we would have an officer-involved shooting. And I pray every night that that never happens in Wilmer, Minnesota. But, I didn't think we'd be dealing with this issue. So, I would just urge you in your own way to support Melvin and his family, to support our diverse community, and how we can encourage the people from ICE to look at this as a holistic issue. And again, my concern is breaking down the fabric of our community and of our families. And so, those are the comments I wish to make. There were about sixty people, seventy people in attendance last night. It was a very diverse group. I was humbled to be there. They originally asked me if I wanted to say a few words. I said no, and after hearing some of the comments, it was, I was compelled to make a few comments. One of the things is Pastor Jose over at Living Hope Church. He's been a pastor in the Latino community for twenty-five years, and this is the first time anything like this has ever happened to a parishioner of his, and he was having a tough time discussing it. So Pastor Jose, thank you for the work that you do in our community, and thank you for the leadership that you provide. So those are the comments that the mayor has to make this evening. Councilmembers, are you wishing to make comments? I'll start off to my left. Councilmember Osmeus?
Nothing.
Meske?
No. No, thank you.
Yeah.
Sure. Councilmember Christensen?
I'm curious as to when we're gonna have a discussion on the committee structure. You know, it's been six months, and I was in and spoke to Mr., or Ike, our administrator, and my concern of having a finance and labor committee, at least. We're doing ourselves no favors by having a complete council meeting, and he says, "We can't get it all done in the work sessions. There's no way. There's things that should be discussed that we aren't talking about." And it concerns me, and I'm wondering where we're at. Are we gonna decide on this? I know the new members have never been in a committee structure. They don't know how it operates. They've probably attended a few of the committee meetings, but it, to me, it's a proper way to do. I feel left out. When I was in and talked to administrator, I just feel like every two weeks, I don't know what's going on. I don't know what in the world's going on in Wilmer. Somebody's digging a hole, a block from me, my office, they're preparing some property, and I don't know what's going on. I mean, usually, you find that out in public works or community development. I'm unaware of what's going on in our city as a councilman. That concerns me. And we need to have this discussion, and maybe at least try it for six months at the committee structure, as we had before. We're blind leading the blind, I think. I mean, we come to these meetings and rush everything through, the public doesn't, there's no comments in the local newspaper about the public works meeting, or the labor, or finance, or community development. They're unaware, just like I am. And I think we need to have that discussion. I'm wondering, is it forthcoming, or?
Mr. Councilmember Christensen, I had asked the city administrator to address that this evening, and I know that he is putting a plan together. We did talk about this on Thursday, and it would be up for review and on the agenda for August, for one of our meetings to be talked about. And so, it will be an agenda item in the work session.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up.
Sure.
Councilmember Schwantes?
Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a lot going on in Wilmer to take advantage of, and I'm just gonna mention a few. Friday night, we have the Relay for Life. I think we all know of someone who has had a bout with cancer, or passed to cancer, or something like that, so if you can be involved with that, please do that. We have the National Night Out coming up. We have a law enforcement get-together on the same day as the Relay for Life, so you can try to allocate your time there. Our, our local candidate, Carly Darwin, is vying for Aquatennial Princess at, in Minneapolis this week, so think positive thoughts for her.
And if you have an opportunity to talk to those documentarians, I would encourage you to do that. I've said it before, we are an international community, and we've got to sell that. We have to promote that. We are a diamond here. We are a diamond, and we've got to let them help us promote that. And helping our public works, if you're mowing the lawn, don't put the glass kippings on the sidewalk. They wash down the street. Don't put them in the street. They wash into the sewer system. We spent eighteen thousand dollars that should have been going for public services for our community, and we got penalized for that. So, if you have a neighbor that's doing it, you know, be friendly. Just mention, hey, it's not the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then in front of you, each of you have the Rockin' Robins event that happens tomorrow night out at Robins Island, so make sure and attend that as well if you can. Next item on the agenda is going into an executive session, closed session, and so, council, I would look for a motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute thirteen D oh five sub three C to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase of real property identified as parcels numbers ninety-five zero zero three dash four eight four zero and four eight eight zero. I'd entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Apologize for interrupting. Given the unique, I think, plan for the closed session this evening, I would recommend that the motion first be to recess, to be reconvened in ten minutes in the back conference room, with the understanding that the city council is going to be leaving the premises to view parcels of real property, and you do need to identify the real property on the record before you take a motion to close the meeting. So if you have the...
I have what you sent me.
You could read those parcel ID numbers, and you'll be covered.
You did, didn't you?
I did read the parcel numbers.
My apologies. What I would recommend, though, is that this motion be a motion to recess until ten minutes into the back conference room.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recess.
We're recessed.
Ten minutes.
We're going in a bus.
The Wilmer City Council is back in open session. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded to reopen the meeting. Counsel, is there any action you'd like to take?
So, I'd like to make a motion to, help me out now, to explore the possibility of building that we have an opportunity to purchase?
First right of refusal.
Or first right of refusal?
I believe the motion you're looking to make is to instruct staff to work with the real estate agent to put the city in a position of right of first refusal.
Correct. I would like to make a motion that we have the right of first refusal and have staff work with the realtor on a right of first refusal on the building that we explored tonight.
Motion is made and seconded to instruct staff to work with the real estate agent to put us in a position of right of first refusal for parcels numbers ninety-five zero zero three dash four eight four zero and nine five zero zero three dash four eight eight zero. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. There's nothing else to come before the council, entertain a motion, do adjourn. So moved.
So second.
Were adjourned.